Call the meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Solfi?
Here.
Counselor Savage?
Here.
Youth representative?
Here.
Counselor Fleck?
Here.
Counselor Stannett?
Here.
Counselor Irvin?
Here.
Counselor Roberts? Mayor Gowing?
Here. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no items to be added to the agenda. Brings us to item four, appearances of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. This is a time for citizens to comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by presiding officer, provide their name, address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to council discussion on that item. Council will not engage in any discussion or make any decision based on public comments this time. However, the council may take the comments under advisement and discussion and action at a further council meeting. So I have Johanna Zee.
Hi, Johanna Zee, 1386 Cottonwood Place. I was going to talk about one thing, but I added something to it. I want to talk about the election and my concerns about election integrity here. We've had some people in Eugene noticing some of the ballot boxes being stuffed with excessive ballots. I'm not sure if you guys know, but that is actually legal to do. So I request, because for several, for quite some time, the ballot box in Cottage Grove here had a truck blocking it, so you couldn't see from the community center to the ballot box if you were sitting there. So that would be great if there were a camera there so that we could see the ballot box. If anybody hasn't watched 2000 Mules, there are in fact arrests being made in Arizona of nonprofits, the heads of nonprofits who were found to be, you know, from these videotapes that they have with this documentary. So I just want to throw that out there. I think we all want to have a fair and honest election. The next I would like to talk about, I attended the climate town hall. So I wanted to share some ideas. I've been an activist for, you know, much of my life on environmental issues and variety of issues. And the format offered, you know, an opportunity for us to explore this issue and hear about concerns specific to this area. And I actually appreciated the comments Richard Myers had on the Beeper Show about it. I loved his, he had three things that he had said. He said, "He's all for anything that's smarter, cheaper, and more sustainable." And I really appreciated that comment that he made. At the town hall, though, I was surprised not to hear anything about geoengineering, the High Frequency Active Oral Research Program, or HARP, that do, D E W, because we love our acronyms, directs energy weaponry, and DARPA, Defense Advanced Research Projects Agency, all of which affect our climate significantly. As we know, since the late 50s, scientists have had the technology, right, to see clouds and make it rain. The manipulation of the weather has just been like a weapon, right, that various countries have used against each other and sometimes for each other in this regard being a tool. So tornadoes, hurricanes, earthquakes, all possible. I know it's crazy. It's not a secret. You can easily look this up. Maybe not on CNN, but you can easily find this information out there. Scientists are talking about, you know, the potential. So I was surprised not to really hear it, but it's, I don't really care if you kind of believe about that stuff or not, you know, but when there is an attempt to create fear in the masses and something you call a climate crisis, without knowing all the information, it does become my business. I do believe we have climate change. Climate change is normal. It's what the Earth does, what the planet does, and climate crisis, no. So last year, Project Peritus showed an undercover video of a top editor at CNN who admitted that the COVID crisis was all propaganda and that when the fear waned from that, they were going to move to the climate crisis. And sure enough, this is what they did. Why? Because fear sells. And I spoke about this on one of my podcasts last year, and here we are again. It's at the forefront of the news again. So when we're in a state of fear, we can't think rationally. We're unable to make clear decisions. We end up reacting and not responding. So at this town hall, the issue of bridging the political divide came up. How do we get them to do what we want them to do, right, was the question? Well, from that place, you don't, right? When someone tries to create a state of fear or panic and tells me there's a crisis, I know that they're not in balance, that their critical thinking skills are lapsed. But the real crisis is fear, and there is a crisis in our schools right now, but hey, that's another topic. But we can't bridge this divide if we're not willing to listen to each other. If you talk to me about your personal direct experience without judging others, then I can hear you. If you tell me there's a climate crisis, I'll show you just as many scientists out there who say that there's not. So all I'm seeing right now is people in fear who are reading off talking points that they got off of the internet. We know about Al Gore, right, who talked global warming, even made a movie, An Inconvenient Truth. He told us a bunch of things that would come to fruition and that actually never have. And I'm going to give to Mindy this great little article about 10 predictions that came, that were, you know, global warming predictions that never came about. Sometimes we're unable to take a step back and say, you know, oh, wait a minute. Is this, you know, is this the only thing they've been telling us that's supposed to happen? And it hasn't happened, you know? So I warn everybody about jumping into that. So you've been urged, the city council, to do something now about this so-called crisis. But I invite you, as it seems like I hear that people are doing, is to take each situation that it comes up, thoughtfully listen to the specific ideas from community members, see if they make sense to you, ask for more information if you want it, and from that place, make the best decision you can. I also invite those who have brought this narrative to the forefront to consider dropping the story around it and focus on the real issues. We know our air is polluted, our forests need cleaning up, the oceans and soil have so much plastic in it. Our natural world is literally being choked. We've been conditioned to be consumers of cheap, plastic, China-made products. But I think that, again, if we can act as a community together, we can learn to source our food and our clothing locally, and we can become more sustainable as a community. And kind of the rest, we can just leave to Google. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. No clapping. Kathleen Mattson, did you want to speak on both on and off the agenda or just the agenda item?
Mayor Gowing, I thought that 30 minutes was what it was.
Oh. So do you want agenda item or not agenda?
Uh, agenda.
Okay, I'll wait then. Okay, I have Amy Maryday.
Um, Amy Maryday, 205 Adams. Hi, everybody. Uh, go purple line. Woo! I had something else, too. I was a little disappointed that there were three motions at the budget meeting. That was a $46 million budget, and the three motions included one by Dana Maryday for asking for money to be moved to, you know, not from, I don't know, $10,000 for supporting homeless youth, and I was disappointed that didn't happen. And then three hours later into the three and a half hour budget meeting, more motions were made, and one removed $100,000 from the federally qualified health center, and another one removed some $200,000 that was, I believe, for the 99 site, if I have that correct. And I was disappointed in that, and I know that we're in the process that the budget committee brings it to the city council. But I just wanted to say that I don't think we need just one place for the unhoused. I think we need not two places. I think we need probably three places. And please, let's see what we can do with that, especially thinking about mobile services for people who maybe have cars or maybe they want to live further outside the city, but they can't leave their tent unlocked. So maybe like a locker system outside the city limits or something like that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Honesty Cord?
Hi, Honesty Cord, 117 Quincy Avenue. So I just kind of wanted to bring this to your guys' attention. I'm not sure how many of you guys have small children, but I do. I have a five-year-old little girl. And so we frequent Bohemia Park. We kind of stopped going to Quinter Park after we found human feces on the play structure and several, at least dozens, of needles around the park and in the restrooms. But this last week, there was a young girl found shooting up in the bathroom at Bohemia Park. And she was offered help. She declined sadly. But, you know, it is becoming more, more real and present in our city. And, you know, I would really love to see a little bit more cleanup go into Quinter Park. I know a lot of parents are kind of afraid to bring their kids there due to, you know, pictures have been passed around. I'm not sure if you guys use social media, but it's all over. And I don't want to see Bohemia Park turn into that. It is a beautiful place. Our town is a beautiful place. I'd like to see it continue to grow and be beautiful. And yeah, I just thought I would kind of share that. Maybe we can get a productive, productive program, you know, in a place. Obviously, the needle exchange program, I don't feel like is working if they're still being found all over Cottage Grove. But maybe something to look into.
Thank you. Okay, so everybody else I have signed up for the homeless topic. So that brings us to item five, public hearings. There is none. Item six, consent agenda? Second. Have a motion with a second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item seven, resolution ordinance. There is none. Item eight, business from the city council. Hey, council update from Oregon Department of Transportation on the urban upgrades project. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. This evening, we have representatives from ODOT. We have Shane Prohaska, who's the resident engineer for Area 5. And we have Pat Woodhurst, who's the assistant president, engineer for Area 5. They have a PowerPoint presentation this evening, and so I'll turn it over to you, Pat.
Girl, here you are. Here you are.
So I'm Pat Woodhurst. I'm here with ODOT. So I'm here for a presentation. Yeah. Okay, we're good. All right, so I'm Pat Woodhurst. I'm here for the urban upgrades for Cottage Grove here. Construction project that we're, is going to be starting this summer here. And go ahead to the next slide. So... All right. So again, introductions kind of already been introduced, but Pat Woodhurst, assistant resident engineer, and Shane Prohaska, our resident engineer. And this project here is going to be for... Let's get the head, actually. So go ahead to the next slide here. The prime contractor for this job is going to be Sula Dock, which means gold in Yupick. Joel Zenny is the Oregon Division Manager. He may have, I think he wanted to talk a little bit about his project or his construction company there. They've, they've done a few of these jobs here in our region lately, and so they're kind of moving in. And I've got full faith in their abilities here. Joel, are you on?
Yep, I am. Hopefully you guys can hear me all right.
Yes.
All right, my name's Joel Zenny. Born and raised up here in Springfield, Oregon. We're the prime contractor here for the Cottage Grove project. I've been operating the Sula Dock Oregon Division for the last five years, working in and out of Lane County. And we're excited to work on this project and work in a place that we all call home. A lot of my foremen and operators and labors are, live in the city of Cottage Grove and the outside outskirts of Cottage Grove as well. So we really do enjoy being a part of the community in which we are building these projects and want to work together to find good solutions to lessen the impact on the community, so.
All right, thank you, Joel. All right, go ahead, next slide. All right, the agenda for this project, our first presentation, is we'll talk about the location of it, the project's schedule and scope of work, and overview of the construction stages, one through four, as well as a couple of the detours. And then lastly, we'll touch on the I-5 connection bridge that goes over the railroad there. That's going to be an upcoming project that will be next year and kind of overlap. Go ahead with the next slide. All right. This is the project location map. We'll be starting at the north end of this Cottage Grove there, the Coast Forecourt Climate River. And currently, it is a single lane in both ways with no sidewalks to the connector bridge of Lane Road there, after which it goes to two lanes to Woodson Place. And currently, there's sidewalks on the west side and a few on the east side. We'll be improving on that. Go ahead for the next slide there. Project's good. This construction will be two seasons long, from summer 2022 to summer 2023. Our anticipated starting date's mid-August. We'll have to get some pipes constructed, and that's what's really holding us up and what's driving the schedule there. We'll be creating new sidewalks and ADA ramps on both sides from Woodson Place to the connector, and then just on the west side to the coast of the river there. We'll be providing a turning refuge while reducing the number of lanes in one way for each direction. This will aid in helping people get across to, at what will be installed, a new rectangular rapid flashing beacon. This will have a push button, a push button, so it will actually be only going off when someone's waiting to cross. I'm sure everybody's used to driving down the road and you see signs that are always up, and you're ignoring them. That's kind of what's going on with that beacon there right now. It's always on. People do kind of tend to zone it out. We'll also be improving the drainage through there, installing new signal poles at Woodson Place, and improving the lighting down the corridor. Go ahead, next slide. This is the stage one storm work, stormwater work. Like I said earlier, it's beginning in mid-August and should be finishing up in mid-late September. Next slide. So in red is where we'll be having construction work down the middle of the lane, and the blue will be, have to be flagged because I'll be constructing across the next one. My traffic's walking around it. Go ahead and flick it. This shows us a view where we'll, how we'll be splitting up the traffic control. Like I said, this construction will be down the middle with traffic on either side of you. Go ahead to the next thing. And again, another one just saying, showing we have a little more room. It's a little tight up at the connector bridge, we're all in. Here we go, quite a few, 17 feet, which is quite a bit of, around 12 foot's your normal roadway. Go ahead to the next slide. All right. This is stage two. It should be starting late December, mid-January. Yeah. Actually, no. Stage two, phase one, sorry. It should be starting, stage starts late September, finishes early, mid-December. Traffic will be shifted to the east while construction begins on the west side. New traffic lanes will be striped, so we'll have two lanes in each direction, and there will be a temporary signal created at Woodson Place so we keep the heads directly over the traffic lanes. Next slide. So through here, we've got, you know, same color coding as last time, pink is where the construction is. We've got the light blue showing we'll be maintaining, keeping driveways open. So those, those business access will be maintained during construction, and we'll be putting up blue, two-word mark codes that signify that those are open. And it gets a little tight there at Woodson Place, so they're only going to work on one side there. The north side of the Woodson Place itself, getting around the radius. Go ahead to the next slide. Shows us cross-sections. This helps show that we have two lanes going in each direction. Next to the barrel, there's actually a channelized, pedestrian channelizing device that'll help keep the public safe while walking along the construction area and away from traffic as well. It'll help significantly. And go into next slide there. Okay, so there'll be a kind of a phase two, stage two there, where we are on the south side, working on the Woodson Place there, just kind of wrapping up the corner there. Go to the next slide, and it shows us a view showing how that lane is and that the pedestrian access now will be behind the construction work. So go on to the next one. This is where stage three roadside, we'll be shoving traffic to the west side and constructing on the east side. It'll start mid-January, late April. And go ahead and push the button there. And as you can see, we'll be, you know, keeping maintaining and access for the public. Go ahead and slide. This is a cross-section where we've got pedestrians there and channeling devices that'll help keep them separate from going into the construction zone and keep them out of traffic. Place again, which should get, and one more time, and we'll see a pedestrian route. That's actually your existing flashing beacon there. That's just one of the many ways to get through there and cross. Go ahead and next thing, okay. This shows us some of the detours. So during phase one, road, the road closures will be Gare Avenue, Lorna Avenue, and Panera Avenue, which means North Chamberlain Avenue and North Tenth will be open. Go ahead and click that. We'll see a little animation of how your detours go about. And it's through there. And so that's, that's a, go ahead and we'll just look at the next phase. We'll kind of switch some traffic. We'll build some of the roads and that and come through. So the next detour phasing will be, Panera Avenue will still be closed, and 10th Street will now be closed. Okay, go ahead and click that. Well, that's closed. North Chamberlain Avenue, Gare Avenue, and Lorna Avenue will be open. One more time to get those 10th Street, there we go. All right, on to the last stage here, stage four. It's going to be paving, striping, and the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, as well as new signal at Woodson Place. I know there's been some, it'd be nice to get new rapid flashing beacon there, so go ahead and click that. And go ahead and, we'll be constructing the concrete middle island there and then installing the rapid flashing beacon at that point. At that point, we should be getting really close to finish up. We'll do the last level of paving and striping, and that road will be done. Now, like I said earlier, there is this other project coming up next year. It's going to be over the railroad, and it's currently in design or getting, it's getting wrapped up. But we'll be, I'll be administering both of these, and we've got language and contractors to make sure the contractors work together on traffic control, and we've made sure that 24, seven days a week, there'll be access across that bridge for emergency vehicles. Right? Is there any questions? Go ahead.
It'll be on the minutes. It'll be on the minutes.
It'll be on the minutes.
We don't take public comment during a presentation.
So are there any questions?
Counsel Fleck?
So as you were starting to talk, I was worried about access to the businesses, and it looks like you have that addressed. What if a business comes to you and says, "Hey, I'm having some issues"? How would you guys address the concerns?
Well, we'll be right on that. Again, that's an important thing. We've got contract language in there that they need to maintain that access through there. We'll work with them. You know, we can't build the driveways and keep them open all the time, but we can execute half of the time on the piece of the outside. And so we won't be able to get two lanes of traffic through. We will be able to narrow it down and get one lane of traffic through. And I know Joel's worked on another project similar to this, and they worked through all those issues fairly well, having any issues with it. So hopefully, things will improve, and we should be able to work with them some more.
Yeah, and just to add, so we'll, we'll reach out to a business owner that's on the, in the location and get with them, with a plan, you know, maybe we can work with them on a Saturday when they're not working or their business hours aren't open. We can construct that entrance. But we, we really do work hand in hand with those business owners to not impact them and find ways to make it right.
Counsel Irvin?
Mr. Mayor, I just want to share appreciation for focusing on Cottage Grove and getting this project underway.
Counsel Stannett?
Yeah, just a comment. It'd be nice, if there's a mechanism or a plan from ODOT to kind of keep us updated as these stages progress. You know, it's a nice presentation. It might be nice, you know, as our next phase gets started to kind, for folks to kind of know what's coming up. I don't know if there's plans for press releases or kind of a back and forth with the community, but.
Could you go up the microphone, please?
So one thing unique about ODOT and Region 2 is that we actually are online sites. Anyone can go on and Google "ODOT construction projects", and we actually have developed an interactive map that provides updates for the public. So anytime anybody's interested, what's going on, where we're at, you can go there and you can see everything, everything in Region 2, just from Lane County all the way up to Astoria. So if there's any projects anyone has questions on, it's a great resource to use, and it's something that we'll be using for this project. Anytime there's a big develop, when we get out from one stage to the next, we'll put up updates that people are aware of when that's going to happen and can be prepared for those changes.
Great, thank you.
And ODOT has been reaching out, too, because they called me a year and a half ago, I think it was, when this was first talked about and had a meeting with, when Franny Brendel was there. And so, and I've worked with business owners that had concern and got those solved through the, through the project. So it's been pretty good working with you guys.
Yeah, no, to restate, too, I mean, this is a community project, and as Joel mentioned, we're here to make it successful for everyone, you know, impacts, make sure that construction can be disruptive, but we're going to try to minimize that as much as possible.
And we've had two fatalities down there, so we need to address that, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, brings us to item 8B, reconsideration. Do you want to talk first, Mr. Myers, or do you want me to take the public comment?
Go ahead.
Okay, so I've got 14 people, I think, 12 people signed up, or no, sorry, 24 people. So that's like two hours and five minutes. So stick to your five minutes. If you can do it in less, please do. But, so here we go. Bruce Kelch?
Bruce Kelch, 78340 Hallerman Road. I'd like to make a couple of observations about how the council operates to begin with. And the first one is regarding the motion to reconsider. I know you don't follow Robert's Rules of Order, but it's worth quoting a registered parliamentarian. The orientation and purpose of Robert's Rules of Orders is towards making decisions and then moving on. One good reason to reconsider would be if someone had obtained new information that might change the outcome of the vote. Simply being unhappy with the outcome and hoping for something different is not a reason to move to reconsider. So in the future, I suggest the council be very circumspect about using that motion to reconsider. It's permissible by your rules, but is it advisable, I think, only rarely and very carefully crafted circumstances that would, that would cause you to reconsider. It should not be easy to undo a decision once it's made. It should not be easy to undo a decision once it's made. The second thing is the use of the information from the town hall on April 5th. My sense is that the responses given by nearly 200 community members really has been ignored and not used by the counselors. And there's a, an objection that people have to the format, but I found the format extremely useful, and every person there had a chance to have their opinion expressed and to be listened to. Let me review some of the key responses in relationship to the homelessness issue. Eighty-four percent of 192 people knew someone had been homeless. Cottage Grove is a town of great heart, and so there's great empathy, I believe, for the unhoused. Fifty-nine percent agree the city should do more than the minimum based on law and case law. Eighty-seven percent support the development of a low-barrier shelter with the goal to provide access to permanent housing as soon as possible. Eighty percent agree or somewhat agree to shelters with wraparound services. Eighty percent agree or somewhat agree to favor the Highway 99 site over the warming shelter site behind Derry Marts. Eighty-four percent agree or somewhat agree to the city's proposal, that the city's proposal is a reasonable approach to addressing homelessness in Cottage Grove. And ninety-three percent agree the city should develop shelter sites that prevent camping in public parks. The law is clear that the city has a legal responsibility. Charitable organizations, churches, other organizations in town do not have the resources of people to deal with this large societal issue. They do have a moral responsibility to be involved in working partnership with the city and other organizations to address the issue. Who's responsible for helping the unhoused? We all are. We're part of a community, and some of our neighbors need a hand in getting to a safe place where they can regroup, learn skills to change their lives, and become more efficient people, more effective people, and part of our community. Discussions has been, this discussion has been before the city council for five months. Going back to December even, there's information that's been shared with the council. If the ci, if the council doesn't make a decision to move forward for a low-barrier shelter, it will then be created a situation that will allow no barriers in the city parks and public spaces. Is the city plan perfect? No. No plan will be perfect, and all plans addressing this complex issue, a power to address homelessness will have its critics. But we should not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This plan has been guided by case law and legislative legislation that we put into effect and the resources of our community. You gotta remember, the city cannot prohibit camping in public spaces unless other space or alternative shelters provided. Until the council approves the motion for the shelter site, request for proposal.
I can't hear.
Until the council approves the motion for the shelter site, requests for proposals cannot be issued. The council and the city have to start somewhere. People have raised concerns about the plan, health, safety, transportation, and that highlights the needs, the need to be addressed as the plan moves forward. These concerns were also raised in the town hall, and so people need to be looking at that, what, what's it gonna take to make this plan successful? I don't see alternative plans being offered by counselors. So what's the plan? If this, if not this one? I support the council moving ahead, approving the city's plans so that RFPs can be issued, and dialogue begin with interested organizations, and moving forward can happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Jackie Lester.
She's called in, she needs to do star six.
Use star six if you're online and can't get in. Go ahead, Jackie.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for the opportunity to address the important topic that we're at this evening. I'm a forty-three-year resident of Cottage Grove and retired for thirty years with the school district, and I feel like I'm pretty familiar with the needs of our community. I believe we're all united in our desire for a healthy and thriving community. To achieve this, we need to come together and focusing our efforts on prevention of the root causes of food insecurity, unemployment, healthcare, childcare, and the reason we're here today, homelessness. Although we know we need to focus on prevention, unfortunately, we're faced with addressing the immediate needs of our community who are without housing right now. Like many of you, I attended the town hall meeting to address this issue. I heard Richard Myers and the city attorney tell us that if we don't choose to create housing opportunities, the current legal policies will allow for unhoused individuals to be camping in our parks and other public spaces that we all enjoy with our friends and families, and we all know that this has the potential to result in unsafe and unsanitary conditions. I believe the proposed shelter project with contracted management services is our best option at this point in time. The proposed management includes individual case management. During the town hall meeting, a community member at my table expressed her frustration with the Housing First model, advocating instead for a one-on-one model of addressing individual needs and barriers in order to begin a pathway out of homelessness. I fully agree that we do need to address this issue on an individual basis, but for me, that means we need to first make sure that the individual is in a safe environment, then bring in the contracted community support specialists to work directly and individually with each person. The proposed shelter project would allow for this to happen. We have come together as a community to provide community support specialists to work one-on-one in multiple locations. South Lane School District currently has embedded community resource specialists in each school to work with individuals and families. The Friends of the Library group wrote a grant last year to bring a community health worker support for individuals needing navigation of resources and supports. Peace Health has routinely employed community health workers to be out in the community working with families and individuals. And South Lane Mental Health employs peer support specialists to work directly with individuals. Building a local network of community health workers to specifically work one-on-one with individuals is one way we can address prevention of homelessness and other critical needs as well as working on immediate issues. For community members who are concerned about the safety of students at high school with a location of the proposed shelter, I'd like to remind them that there is a school resource officer on site. Current Cottage Grove police regularly patrol the area, and I'm sure that this would increase when the shelter's in place. I'd go as far as to say that housing individuals in a managed site is far safer for youth as well as for all members of our community than having unsupervised random camping in our parks and our public spaces. In closing, I'd like to remind everyone that many of our current unhoused population grew up in Cottage Grove, went to school here, and worked here before finding themselves in this debilitating situation. Seventy-five to eighty percent of our local population live below the poverty level or are one or two paychecks away from losing their ability to pay their rent or their mortgage. Last week Sentinel reported a staggering number of homeless youth in our community. Approximately half of these youth are currently couch surfing. These youth have the potential to eventually find themselves out on the street, adding to the current unhoused population. Please join with me and your neighbor in a community effort to come together, to focus our attention on the root causes of homelessness, while also supporting the immediate needs of our unhoused community through the proposed shelter project. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob Dickinson.
Thank you, Mayor Gowing and council members. I'm Rob Dickinson, and I live on Gowdy Hill Road. I'm here tonight to encourage the city to move forward on its proposal for developing transitional housing for the homeless in Cottage Grove on the Highway 99 site. As I have testified in prior council meetings, I believe that developing this transitional housing is not only the best moral and ethical approach, is the best solution for unhoused neighbors, it is also the best thing for our Cottage Grove community. The homeless population in Cottage Grove needs a safe, humane place to live where they have a chance to work towards a better future. Many homeless individuals suffer from significant health issues. We often need a place where they can rest. It is not a cramped car or a damp tent. I've taken many calls in the Cottage Grove Mutual Aid Helpline from individuals that need a bed to elevate a swollen leg or get comfortable for a change. People are anxious just to be able to get clean and have a good shower. And yes, I'm aware of and thankful for the city's efforts to provide a mobile shower service. People struggle in the cold in the winter and in the heat in the summer and they, during the smoke in the wildfire season. And in addition to just a safe, clean place to sleep, the homeless often need additional services, including mental health counseling. Having a well-run transitional shelter, transitional shelter, like what would be developed at the Highway 99 site, where a good organization like Carry It Forward would provide competent management and where wraparound services are possible, we can provide homeless individuals with the best opportunity to move out of homelessness and into better situations. That is the promise of what we could achieve if we go forward with the city's plan. Opponents of this plan don't offer up a plan of their own, but we all know what will result from going forward with no plan. Based on the Ninth Circuit Court opinion in Martin versus Boise and in its subsequent Blake versus Grant pass decision, cities like Cottage Grove cannot prevent homeless individuals from camping in various places in town that could create poor outcomes for both the, those individuals and for the city. Unplanned camping can result in unsafe situations, and homeless individuals can experience violence or other hazards. If people are camping in a road, in a place near roads, accidents and injuries can occur. Net is not to mention the other ill effects of unplanned camping, where no proper facilities exist, such as the accumulation of debris and human and hazardous waste. In the town hall on homelessness, when people were asked what they most wanted to avoid, a great many of the responses were about people not wanting the ill effects of unmanaged camping all over the city, and that is exactly what we're going to see if a majority of the council votes to do nothing. And before I conclude, I want to make a few brief remarks about the homelessness town hall and respecting the will of the people. In my twelve years in Cottage Grove, I can't think of any public forum that drew as many people as a homelessness town hall, over 200 people in attendance with another 50 or so attending virtually. I understand that some folks were unhappy that the format wasn't an open-mic event, but with 200 to 250 people participating, the format used was the best one to get input from the most people and not just the loudest or the most outspoken. And people did give feedback with hundreds of responses. To me, it's wrong to dismiss that feedback as invalid just because one doesn't like the format. The most people in recent history in Cottage Grove to show up and speak on the issue did so, and overwhelmingly, they wanted the city to act and to provide a robust solution to homelessness. Only 1% of the people responded, responding wanted to do nothing more than the minimum required by case law and state law. In fact, 72% of the respondents thought the city should do more than just the minimum required by law. When asked what would be the consequences of the city doing only the minimum, the community weighed in with a wide variety of reasons why this could have poor outcomes in terms of, both in terms of addressing homelessness, and would create a wide variety of problems for the city, our community, and residents. Eighty percent of respondents thought the city could provide transitional shelter that provided wraparound services or should provide that. Eighty-seven percent of respondents supported the development of a low-barrier shelter. So let's, let's be clear, the community has spoken, and they want the, the city to act and to provide a robust solution that is good for the homeless and good for the community. The question now is whether or not the council is listening. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Suzanne Kivany.
Hi, my name's Suzanne Kivany, and I live at 328 Quincy Avenue. Came down here, I don't know, three or four of your meetings, probably been about a month ago, to speak in favor of all these plans that have been made to address homelessness here in our town. We attended the town hall, and we also came down to speak to you to, to thank people for the town hall, for organizing that and, and educating that on what the situation is here in Cottage Grove. And what I learned, among other things, is that we have, you know, close to 200 people here in Cottage Grove that are homeless. Most of the people that were in that room that night, including myself, have either been homeless, had a brush with homelessness, or know people who are homeless. And it's clear, it was clear that the majority of us in the room want you to do something about the problem. We voted on it. But since then, it seems like a smaller group of people, very vocal and intimidating, have been successful at scaring, intimidating, bullying our council into inaction, and therefore the rest of us, we can't do anything about it, can we?
Yes, we can.
Keep it down.
My question to you, the council tonight, is, do you plan to disregard the sentiment that we expressed at the town hall that night? Last time I was here, it was suggested by some people that maybe way, a way to address the problem is to gather up all the homeless people, and let's put them down by the river with some porta-potties down there. They know how to camp, right? That way, they're out of, out of the way, we don't have to look at them. I can't think of a worse situation for public health and safety than doing that. It's totally irresponsible. How about those of you up there who are interested in business in Cottage Grove and tourism? I was down at Opal Park the other day, and there was someone laying down there sleeping in a sleeping bag. It's starting already. I see it popping up all around. If we want this to be a destination for dining, or hiking, or tourism, and we want to have a pretty little Oregon town, what are the bikers gonna think as they bike past our sprawling homeless camp down by the river and they observe our poverty on display? Also, last time I was here, it was suggested, or ascertained by some, that it's not government's job to deal with this problem. Well, I couldn't disagree with you more. That's outrageous. This is a public safety issue, it's a public health issue, it's a quality of life issue here in this town, not just for homeless people, for me, and for the rest of the year. We want our town the way it is, not to be a campground for homeless people. It also affects business, tourism, everything. So please, don't dump this problem on us, or try to dump it on churches or the police. Do your jobs. Protect our town, protect us, the citizens, the homeless, all of us, we need your action. You have it all right out in front of you. You have the money, you have the plan, you have the place, everything's right there, the ways and means to deal this, with this problem. Maybe throw up your hands and say, "It's not my job." This is outrageous. Please, do your job and handle the problem.
Thank you. Bernie Donner.
Bernie Donner, 204 Quincy, all in the short and sweet. I encourage the city to do the bare minimum of code changes enforcement, and secondly, allow space for the broader community to address the homeless housing issue.
Thank you. Erwin Mastaspain.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Erwin Mastaspain. I live at 1744 Friendly Street in Eugene, Oregon. I am the executive director or co-director of Carry It Forward, that has been very interested in helping City of Cottage Grove with this camp project, and so as you're reconsidering, I wanted to make some comments tonight. As an organization and as individuals, we care about serving our, our community, and then when we go into other communities, we care about serving them as they want to be served. And so we've spent a lot of time listening to city council meetings, we went to the town hall meeting, we've... Town Hall meeting, we've spoken to the Lions Club, we've spoken to individuals and other folks, and I feel like we've gotten a lot of sense of what the concerns are in the community. So I wanted to speak to a few of those tonight briefly and then let you know that we're completely accessible to any further detailed conversation or email exchanges as possible. We do have a lot of experience running similar low barrier camps in Eugene, including my own neighborhood, actually. And so I feel like I understand both the concerns of the neighbors as well as the needs of the unhoused population that we serve. I think there are some misunderstandings about what low barrier is and what that means for this camp, particularly what it means like that it might equate to no rules or accountability. So I wanted to speak to that. We start the very first day with camp rules and goal setting for the folks that are there. We have very specific rules around keeping the environment clean, keeping your belongings, you know, in the shelter and not accumulating around the shelters. We do expect a good neighbor policy, so we're expecting decent behavior in the community that we're in. And if there isn't, then we work with individuals about that. And of course, people are having a rough time, that's why they're there. So we do work with each person to help kind of shape behaviors. We give people chances because we are low barrier, but we do have expectations and they are not allowed to stay if they can't follow the rules after, you know, maybe three or four tries, depending on how egregious the violations are. We do have 24/7 staffing and/or camera coverage, and so we're constantly having eyes on the location. And we work with the police department as a strong partner. We try to establish that partnership really early on in our establishment in the neighborhood. And we really do access them to enforce on, you know, extreme behaviors that we've not been able to change or crime. We don't put up with that. We've even discussed the idea of running background checks for these folks in your community to make sure that we're not putting superviolent offenders as part of this camp. But it is our style to, if we're not placing somebody or we're having to remove them or exit them from the camp, it is our style to try to find where a legitimate alternative for them could be, so they're not just going back to the street and being more of a menace. So that's part of how we operate. I know that there's concern that people from Eugene will come up and be part of this camp, and I just want to reiterate that the preference for Cottage Grove members is absolutely something we support. We have several ideas about how to ensure that people with connection to Cottage Grove are prioritized for this and don't see this as a problem. I think that we can work with this. We do bring our own services in, case management and the housing navigation, and then we work with community partners to bring in other services, including mental health, medical, basic medical care and substance use for treatment providers that are either right there in your own community or we can bring in from other communities that we have relationships with. Ultimately, our goal is to get people off the street and get them stable and moving towards their greater goals and being able to give back to your community and the greater society. So again, I'm just, I'm excited to work on this. If you're willing to reconsider the project, I think we can make really good things happen in Cottage Grove. We're accessible for questions and discussions, so I can be contacted at my email address, which is erwin, A-R-W-E-N, at carryitforward.net. And I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Christina Schu?
Yes, hello, I'm Christina Schu on Gaudyville Road. And people do not intentionally choose to be unhoused. It is telling that our community survey showed that 84% of people know someone who has experienced or is experiencing homelessness. This is evident by visible and an increasing number of tents all around town, which will persist until we provide alternative shelters that would allow enforcement of ordinances prohibiting a homeless person on public property at night. Aside from addressing the community concerns expressed in the Homelessness Town Hall of tents all over the city and people taking over parks and sidewalks, developing a shelter for the unhoused is the right thing to do and is the first step towards helping people to help themselves. After all, until basic physiological needs like shelter are met, people are unable to move forward to be independent members of the community. I support developing a homeless shelter at the Highway 99 site and the issuance of an RFP provider that would provide both shelter and services. This council and our community is one that is full of kindness and care, especially for those in our community who are most vulnerable. Moving forward with this proposal addresses both community concerns and lifts up members of our community. I see this low barrier shelter as an opportunity to meet people where they are today, but providing support, encouragement, incentives, and services that allow them to move to a tiered and ideally permanent housing option as they make positive life changes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. If you're on the phone, press star six.
She's on there, but she's also given her written comments there on the sheet.
Then I'll move past. You need to pull your microphone down.
The homeless situation is not homeless, it's houseless. People are without houses. I would encourage each and every one of you to camp in a tent by yourself for two weeks. Go without, you can't go home to go to the bathroom, you can't use anybody to use their phone to help you. I would like for you to experience before you make a judgment call. This situation is out of hand with children in our high schools, with adults who need extreme mental health care and are being denied and dismissed every day because they can't communicate. They have a problem. It's not your problem, obviously, it's ours. People talk about what's happening with the poop from people in the parks. But where are they going to go? Where are they going to go? Do you care about something just as simple as being able to be allowed to go into a private place and dispose of your body functions safely? A person who sleeps on a sidewalk does not know the danger he's putting himself into. You want to put him by the river? Fine, let's put him by the river where they can all drown and fall away and be dismissed because they're out of sight, out of sound, nobody sees them. But the people that go there to fish, the people that go there to spend their time by the river, well, what are they going to do? What are they going to say? They're going to come back to you and going to say, "You've got a problem, we want you to fix it." Where I live, it's unbelievable where they're camped out and the situations that are happening because there is no order, there's no one there to be able to help them to function in a normal way that we take for granted every day of our lives, just even being able to be clean enough to go into a store to buy food. Oh, and that would be another thing. You can only take a shower one day a week during a certain hour of the day. I want you to try that. And you have to go to community sharing to do that, people. I want to see how you like it, how your privacy is invaded. And you think these people don't feel this every day of their lives that they're out there? And yet you don't want to care about it or think about it. You had a great plan, all of us were together on it. I don't know who got behind you and told you, "No, you couldn't do it." I have a feeling it was on a private agenda. You all got pushed, like the lady said, bullied, bossed, intimidated, and you allowed it. You allowed it! How could you do such a thing to these people? Built them up to where they actually thought something good was going to actually finally happen to them and then just dropped them right down into the pit. Well, these are some of the things that I talk to the young people about. So how are houseless kids that are at risk, young adults supposed to get an apartment, when they must, when they don't have, first of all, any credit? They don't have any credit, they don't have any rental history, and they're asking for three times the amount of the requirement, so three months in advance and a deposit? Where are they going to get this kind of money with the resources that they have of working in a regular, low-income poverty economy?
You need to wrap up.
I would like to know what you're going to do about our young people. I would like to know how you're going to allow them to keep living and existing in a poverty economy and tell them that that's okay, that they don't need to worry about it, that you don't. Go to bed tonight and sleep without any problems.
May I hand this to that lady? Okay. I appreciate that mom that came here tonight sharing about her five-year-old daughter and going to Bohemia Elementary Park. And the homeless folks here have places to go, but they choose not to stay at them. And otherwise, they're out and about during the day, going to the park and doing their drugs, you know, during the day and, you know, leaving needles. And my sister, one of my sisters, told me that, okay, a family friend, his job is to clean up after the homeless folks. And he's been doing that for a long time, that's his total job. And the main concern of that gentleman is all of the used needles in the playgrounds that he has to clean up. The playgrounds where the kids play, you know, that's just majorly, majorly scary. And I was wondering about the paper here, it said, "After considering several sites, city staff settled on a piece of property in 99." Well, I don't know what happened, but did the several sites be brought up to the city council for them to figure out and before there was a consideration on one certain spot and to bring forward to the council folks? And I'm sorry, I forgot to say hi, councilmen and Mayor Dowling and council ladies. Okay. But my main concern are the kids, the kids, their safety. You know, there's a paper about extending, also when our street eventually goes in, there'll be an alternative, safer route for the homeless folks, but it's not going to be for the kids. You know, Bohemia Elementary School is right there along our street and little kids walk together home or to school and then the high schoolers as well, you know, going in front of Bohemia Elementary down to Cottage Grove High School. And it's just extremely, extremely scary. You know, if my kids, I have four children, and if they were young, you know, I'd just be, I don't know what I'd do, you know, I would just continue, you know, speaking out against the homicide being adjacent to any school. And it seems like with the Boise-Martin case, that, you know, there's an area, Councilman Senate, he mentioned about the warning center, you know, just have something for now until something's figured out, you know, because we've got to just have something that is temporary, but according to the law acceptable, you know, until something is figured out that's going to be safe for the kids, you know? So many parents are concerned about the kids, you know, so many that don't even live near Bohemia or Cottage Grove High School. And the needles, the drugs, this low barrier, you know, folks can be all drugged out and go back into the area, you know, they're not going to be tested for drugs, you know, then they can go that night out. And then enabling folks, it's going to bring in more folks to, "Hey, Cottage Grove is a great place to stay," you know, "And they have homeless places." You know, and this is, it's just too scary for our kids. Please keep our kids safe. Please. Please keep, you know, the homeless folks camping site wherever their housing, away from schools, access to schools that are walking distance, you know, just that our street is planned for the homeless folks to travel that route. Well, that's right in front of schools.
You need to wrap up.
Yeah. Well, please, please make sure the kids are safe. You know, this 99 site is not safe. And then the high school, okay, our city will end up having to put fences around the schools if the 99 places propose, you know, and the resource officer, you know...
You really need to wrap up.
It'll just cost the city a whole lot more in the future. Thank you.
My name is Valeria Clark and I live at 324 South 13th Street. And as a local citizen interested in all the citizens of our community, I believe it is in our city's best interest to create a facility that will house those currently homeless. I am a social worker and a therapist. I've spent many hours of my professional life assisting people with housing issues. I'm not suggesting this is an easy issue to deal with, but I do believe it is up to us who can to provide a solution for those who can't. As a founding member of Be Your Best, my hope was to be part of the solution to Cottage Grove's most troubling issues and to support the overall health of Cottage Grove. I believe being without a home is a health crisis. Living on the streets is debilitating, it wants physical and mental health. It makes it difficult to find work and become stable. I am a housed, middle-class, white lady, privileged yet having experienced my share of trauma. I've heard of the struggles of those who are unhoused. As a founding member of the Cottage Village Coalition and the first president of Cooperative's Board, I have heard firsthand the challenges faced by those who now have a stable home at the village. All ages, all kinds of stories, all kinds of situations. We are so much alike and despite how different our stories are, no matter how your faith or your beliefs, we are taught in this society to treat each other with dignity and respect. A phrase my mentor and close friend, Tom Mueller, used often. If we're still here, I probably wouldn't have to be standing here imploring the council to do what is best for all of us in this community. He would have already done so. Finally, in my role for 10 years as a crisis worker at the Cottage Grove Emergency Department and having worked closely with the Cottage Grove Police Department, I've seen this issue from many angles and believe the most humane way to deal with it is to create a shelter and option. You have no idea what it's like to work with someone, someone struggling with anxiety and depression for hours, de-escalating them, only to have to discharge them back to the streets, to make their way back to their tent hidden in the wooded areas around our town, knowing they are going right up into the situation that triggered their crisis in the first place, if only I had a shelter to send them to. in the first place, if only I had a shelter to send them to. I do also work at the high school. I work with those students. And they know what's going on in our community. They are homeless. They are unhoused. They are sleeping on people's couches. And they're not unaware of the unhoused that they run into in the street. Where we place the shelter will come near our school, from our area, we'll place the shelter because our city is the size that it is. The best thing that we can do is to not only have a shelter, but have an organization like Arwen's to come in and support the houseless to find their next steps. We have to provide a solution soon because otherwise we'll be tying the hands of our police. They will be left to deal with a problem that isn't prime. The April 5 Town Hall provided lots of solutions, and it was supported by many people. Let's review that info. Please review that information. Many people have described it in detail tonight. I won't go there.
You do need to wrap up, though.
Houselessness is not going away, and most of these folks aren't her owners. Let's let the city find a solution. Let's help the city find a solution. And if and when the problems arise, we solve those. This is our community, and we all love it. Let's be the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Fred Coligan.
Hi, I'm Fred Coligan. I live at 79093 Highway 99. My wife and I moved here 17 years ago. I just have a few things to say. I agree that this homeless issue was a big problem, and it could get worse. And we've all, I think, seen how bad it can get. Drive to Eugene, drive to Portland, drive to the Bay Area. It's a huge problem, but I believe we're obligated to deal with it. It's on the community. My personal belief comes from my faith is that we judge our community by the condition of the last guy. The worst off person in our town is the person who we decide to grade for our town upon. And I believe we owe it to the members of our community to do the best we can. Part of what motivated me to come here tonight was this huge industry in our country that makes money by keeping us outraged and enraged and angry and bunkered down with our tribe with people we disagree with as enemies. And what that's resulting in is gridlock, and our government is frozen. Our national government isn't working. But here, we have a chance. This is a small community. This is a place where democracy really can work. But it's not a zero-sum game. It's not a winner-take-all game. It's a place where we have to listen and give, and success is compromise. Success is giving and listening and not winning everything you want and not taking a hard position, but finding the best solution for the community. My wife and I were among the founders of Best Freezing Nights. And we worked for about four years, meeting dozens of volunteers, folks who came forward because we shared the belief that it was unacceptable for someone to die of exposure in our town. And everyone I know in this town seriously supports the premise that we're obligated to help our neighbors and to help our friends and to help people who don't have anything. Best Freezing Nights had no barriers. We just had rules. And we had almost no problems over four years. Folks came in, we gave them respect, we gave them services, and we learned a lot from our clients. I'd just like to encourage you all to keep working, to work together, to listen to different voices, to include different voices, and to not bunker down with one set of beliefs, but to see if we can't create something here in our little town that we can all be proud of, that can serve the least of us. Thank you kindly.
Thank you. Patrick Cartwright.
Patrick Cartwright. Contrary to prior beliefs, I do live in Cottage Grove. My residence is at 34795 Howard Road. My business is located at 4125 South Bar Street, industrial park. I kind of grade everybody kind of where I stand in the last meeting on this. I still am very well-heartedly against that shelter. I'm against that shelter for numerous reasons. Poor planning. Everybody can say what they want, but what happens? And this is opposed to all of you guys. What happens when the population of that site reaches 40? Where does the people go at that point? Do they go back to the parks? Where do they go? I haven't seen that in any RFU or AP plan anywhere. Just questions. There's so many questions that needs to be answered. Nobody's had the opportunity, really haven't answered, at least not in any form that I've thought. I would urge that we hold more conversations to help this go forward and to see a better outcome. I'm not opposed to a homeless shelter. I'm opposed to a homeless shelter where it's empty most. I've already spent, in the last two weeks, about $15,000 to put in cameras, equipment of security monitoring equipment. Now I'm having to defend it because I don't feel like this. I don't feel it's fair that because of poor planning and site development that I'm the one that's having to be in the process. You want to talk about business? I bring a lot of business on this. And I would continue to use it. Upriver, Brow River, Market 19, there was so much destruction up there. There was videos that's been floating around, private party that organized cleanup up there because of wrong situations. You know? Until we have a good grasp on that, it's just to take a step back once again and maybe throw it on the table, see what the true vote is, what the true numbers are. I can tell you that every argument and every statistic that was thrown up here tonight, I can counter that. Do I need to waste my time? No, you don't. There's several people in this room right now that will certainly be wrong. At the onset of this, I was a little apprehensive. Now, I'm a little objective in that. And my objections are very strong because it's hitting us financially where it shouldn't be. If the city wants to support this, they should support increasing security in the industrial park. When somebody can't get us a place to sleep over there, where are they going to go? They're going to my client park, not anybody else's. I'm right there. I've lived through this in Eugene. I've expressed this before. You're not prepared. The infrastructure is not here. So with that, I'll bring up a couple of other ones. I don't mean to cause any disrespect, but I've heard rumors that certain members of city staff has called in other council members and this is rumors, and I'm just saying, I just want it to be addressed. Private meetings behind closed doors, that's a little, shouldn't be happening. That should be questioned. There is also the fact that, you know, no disrespect, Mr. Klepp, but you're a 5123 coordinator. You're on the state registry of it. I think there's some IRS rules that might come into play, and we should probably get rid of you. With that.
Thank you. Destiny Durst.
Hello, I'm Destiny Durst. I live at 1402 East Madison Avenue at Square One Villages that were built a couple of years ago for people who were homeless or just needed a place. Sorry. I am very thankful to have my place and was given a chance. I am very, I was very close to becoming homeless before that opportunity came. I think there should be more, more opportunities for the homeless. Everyone deserves a place to call home and feel safe, whether it be low-income housing or shelter. Always, sorry. Homelessness has always been an issue and continues to be one. But if we work together and coming up with ways to help the less fortunate, then over time, we could potentially solve this. We don't know why people are homeless. It could be a life choice. It could be just a normal person just like us who became bankrupt or something tragic happened, and they just need a second chance or somebody to go to to help them along. If we work together, oh, wait, no. I would like to see less people on the streets. As a young woman, it makes me feel unsafe walking around town. And it would give a good outlook on our town, and it shows that we care and take care of our people. I can't express how thankful I am to be given a chance to have a place of my own. It has made my life better, and I can't imagine how many lives we could improve just by providing a safe and warm space. I'll leave you with this thought. Wouldn't it be cool if Cottage Grove was named the best place to live just because we took actions to help the less unfortunate or people who just needed a second chance? And we show that we truly care about our people. People are the most important thing about our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Aslan Blackstone.
My name is Aslan Blackstone, and my address is 1414 East Madison Avenue. First of all, thank you to the council for holding this tonight. I know it's your normal meeting, but thank you for just working for our community. I appreciate everything that you guys do for us. And I live at Cottage Village Co-op, CVC. It is where Destiny's from and some other people here as well. And there are 14 residents there. And all of us, or the majority of us, would be homeless if that had not been an option. I was homeless for two years. I lived at the Eugene Mission, and it saved my life. I am grateful to it, but it was high barrier. There were things that did not work with it. And, but one of the things that did work with it that I wanted to mention, sorry, I'm jumping all over the place. I'm a little nervous tonight, hope you understand. One of the things that I appreciated about it was that in order to stay there, you had to participate in some kind of chore upkeep, some kind of work around the mission that basically kind of paved your way. That gave me a sense of pride that I was contributing to the environment that I was living, the community. And I feel like that would be an excellent thing for that, to be a requirement for people to be there, but not that you are requiring UAs or having all of these other restrictions that is going to ultimately keep certain people homeless because they have no other options out there. For whatever reason, life has dealt them a crappy hand. And some of them, I know that people are worried about the children, but let's talk about the children. Some of the homeless in our community are children. Some of the homeless in our community are high schoolers. So let's talk about them. Let's give them a safe place that they can go to at night, a place that they don't have to worry about what's going to happen to their belongings or what's going to happen because they don't have anybody else around there to watch out for them. What ultimately I think helps us is the hope for a change in our future. People were willing to do CVC, to do Cottage Village. And knowing that people in my own community actually wanted to help me and improve my situation in life was eye-opening and life-changing. And I know that people seem to have this stigma attached with homelessness about we're a bunch of lazy people that don't want to participate in society. But the reality is that we are the people in this room. We're veterans. We're disabled. We're dog groomers. We fold clothes at Walmart for you. We do all of these things in this community, and all we want is some extra support and some help. And I don't think that offering a safe place for someone to be able to live who is currently experiencing homelessness is too much of an ask. And yeah, this project is not going to be perfect. There are changes that are going to need to be made. But would you rather just not take any action and allow for these people to continue to have to live outside, to not have a roof over their heads, to not be able to go home tonight and take a bath or take a shower? Do you really want to stand in the way of them having those opportunities because the plan is not perfect right now? Because you don't have every single answer that you want right now? Some answers are only going to be found once you start a project, once you get into it, once you realize what is working and what isn't. Why don't you try talking more with the homeless community, not just talking with one or two people who have been homeless or experienced homelessness? Go out there in the mud, stay outside of your house a week, like she said, recommended. Experience what that is like, and then come back here and choose not to do anything. If you want to vote your conscience, then at least do it with understanding the situation that these people are coming from. And if you're not willing to do that, then how can you ultimately represent them? I think that this is the least that we can do, the very least. And that by setting this example for our children of welcoming someone and giving someone a hand when they need help because of maybe an illness that they've experienced or, like in my case, I have some brain damage from some illnesses, illnesses I did not ask for. Many of these people are in situations they did not ask to be in, but they are in them, and they are part of this community. And I feel like we have a responsibility to keep helping them. And of the people who live at my village, a good majority of them are now volunteering themselves because they want to give back. Some of them were homeless for eight to 10 years, and they are so excited just to have an oven to clean.
You need to wrap up.
Thank you for this time. And I just want you to know that you have the support of so many people in moving this project forward and continued support as well. Thank you.
And let's keep comments to yourself. If you can't respect someone else's freedom of speech, you can't expect them to grant you the same courtesy. Johanna Z.
Hi, Johanna Z, 1386 Cottonwood Place. Yeah, boy, where do I start with this? I feel like a bunch of people have kind of come in, and they haven't really been following this. They haven't heard what people have said. I love it when people come up and share personal direct experience. It's not easy to come up and talk. You know, we have been out talking to the homeless people directly with them. We've been asking them, you know, what do you want? Would you use this site? And most of them said, no, they wouldn't. It's too far out there. I know what it's like to sleep in a car at night with a young child. If you think that Southern California is a great place to be homeless, well, it gets cold, and it's even colder inside of a vehicle, okay? People think it's like an icebox. So it's not exactly, you know, tropical paradise. So I have had that direct experience. I know what that's like. I just wanted to throw that out there. There's been a lot of requests for more information on this project, and it's not coming forward. All we keep seeing is pushing the same exact project forward each time and looking to get a vote without the request, carry it forward. They were said, hey, bring these organizations to the city council, tell them what they can do, what kind of programs. Tell them what they can do, what kind of program this looks like. And yet they haven't come forward. Whatever, you know, for that. There's been a request for what does low barrier actually mean? You know, what's the definition? There's a lot of, you know, I think naivete on, on all of this. Has anybody actually read the RFP to show that there's zero accountability? I don't know if this person from Carry It Forward has actually read it. There's no requirements. There's no requirements to be there. You don't have to be, you know, you don't have to be clean. You don't have to be anything to, to use those services. So now someone mentioned unsafe and unsanitary situations. Well, great, now we're going to have unsafe and unsanitary behind closed doors. You know, how many people are we going to sacrifice in this community until we realize that they need, you know, that the immediate need is not housing? The immediate need seems to be, from everything I've heard and having spoken to people in this community who are unhoused, the immediate need is the drug addiction programs and mental health services, not the housing. There's some assumption that, oh, we're going to put up these houses, and all of a sudden, everybody's going to use these services, like magic. We're just going to, you know, we can't require them to take part in services, but you're expecting them all of a sudden to magically say, we want to be, you know, what is it, a mile and a half outside of town? Use these services? So I think that's naive, you know? And a lot of talk on youth. And again, I don't know if people are following this or not, but this is not a shelter situation for youth. We've already said, not, you know, no minors in this. So that's a whole nother situation. And then the assumption that people are saying, oh, don't do anything. Don't do anything. No, everybody's saying, we've got to do something, but you know, that varies. And this housing-first model, this harm reduction model is one of the reasons we are in this situation in the first place. If you watch any of these documentaries out there, like Seattle is dying, you know, you see that these lax laws that allow drug use and allow, you know, all these other issues to happen to, you know, without any accountability, people just keep doing it. People need boundaries. I have worked as a case manager. I have worked as a home health nurse, and I have had to deal with people with drug addiction. And what do they say? You've got to have strict boundaries. They are not able to make decisions on their own. You cannot, you know, they're very manipulative. You've got to count pills. You've got to, you know, like methadone, whatever it is. They are not able to make those decisions. So how kind is it to wait until people ask for help? So I'm going to submit, I've done some research on this low barrier because it was asked, what does that mean? Low barrier, and a lot of people in the community ask, what does that mean? And, you know, there seems to be three components to it. It's pets, possessions, and partners, right? So some of these low-barrier shelters don't allow pets, you know? And so there's no consistency across the board to say, what is low barrier? So we can create what it is that's applicable to this community, to Cottage Grove, not to Lanning County. And I'm sorry, if Carry It Forward has been working in Eugene, you're not doing a very good job, all right? So why would we use an organization that hasn't proven itself to be effective in what they do? And I think, again, it's a huge conflict of interest. I keep hearing that name. So Eugene Mission, I appreciate what this, one of the speakers said. They have a low-barrier shelter. It advertises low barrier for two weeks. You can come in, you could be high, you can be drunk, whatever, two weeks. You're not allowed to use on the premises. But after that time, they say that you need to, you have to participate. If you want to stay, you have to participate in one of two programs. This is firm, this is boundaries, right? One of two programs. And in order to participate in those programs, you need to be clean. You need to pass a drug test, and there's going to be random drug tests throughout.
You need to wrap up.
You know? So lastly, I'd like people to look at, please, ORS 244, which is the ethics law for public officials. And again, Councilor Fleck, this is just time and time again, your involvement in this, you know, you're very resourceful. But any decision-making on your part is a huge violation of ORS 244. Please, you know, look at this. Again, you have very specific interests in this. It's been brought up. It hasn't been investigated. Your continued financial
Wrap up.
Continued employment is dependent upon this situation. And again, housing first has been mandated in the early 2000s. And on this chart, you can see that all of that has happened because of these programs and these principles. You know, the homeless issue has gotten worse and worse and worse, as everybody has seen. So we don't have an agenda. The only agenda that might be there is
You need to stop.
Destitution from happening. So thank you so much.
Lisa Coligan.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. I'm Lisa Coligan. I live at 79093 Highway 99 here in Cottage Grove. And I've lived there for, I think my husband actually had the right number of years. So it's 16 years. I think I have 15. I'm here as someone who has some passion and some familiarity with unhoused folks. I was one of the original founders of Beds for Freezing Nights, which helped fill a gap need, fortunately. Hopefully, that need will be addressed by your action tonight and moving forward with something more permanent. I'm also one of the original participants in the Cottage Village Coalition, although unfortunately, I couldn't finish my work with them. And I worked at Community Sharing for 10 years, although I didn't always agree with Mike Fleck, as I'm sure he'll tell you. And that was not just with the Spanish-speaking community, but also at the front desk with both housed and unhoused people. And I have the dubious distinction of being a former council member and mayor of the Town of Paradise, which was burnt down to the ground four years ago. And I can tell you, we had some hot moments. And it's not easy to be on the hot seat, if you excuse the pun. But tonight, rather than going through the pros and cons, I'd like to invite us all to step back and maybe take a little different, different approach. And that is because instead of lining up arguments from side to side, let's look at why we hold those values? What are the values behind the reason we're here tonight and the positions we are taking? And I think if we investigate our values, we're going to find that we have more in common than we have difference. And so I'll suggest a few, and I challenge you to see if, if we can't agree on these, because I think everybody in this room will. And the first is, we all love Cottage Grove. If we didn't, we wouldn't be here. And the second is, we want to foster what makes Cottage Grove the great place that it is, that we love. Because again, if we didn't, our value number one of loving Cottage Grove and being here would be threatened. The third is that I think being here tonight proves that we all want to participate in what makes Cottage Grove great, regardless of the sides we may take. And the fourth is that we value the stability, the safety, and the comfort that permanent housing offers. Otherwise, we'd all be living out rough, and this wouldn't be an issue. So if we stay focused on the values, then let's evaluate the decision that you have before you tonight. If we do nothing, then open-air camping will be permissible in pretty much any public space within the city limits due to the Martin versus Boise decision. So we can throw our first two values, loving Cottage Grove and wanting to foster its, its continued presence and beauty, out the window. The second thing is that if that happens, as several speakers have pointed out, we may well end up looking similar to parts of Eugene or Portland, which I believe it was 93% of the folks at the town hall said they absolutely didn't want to have happen. And I suspect that percentage is pretty much universal, regardless of the setting. So again, those are the first two values would be threatened. The third point is that the existing facilities that you have right now behind the community center and town hall cannot continue. So that would challenge our value of having some type of permanent housing for these folks. The Highway 99 option is available, though it's an imperfect option. And I think the speakers here tonight have said that. The amount of citizen participation around this issue confirms how much energy there is to support a reasonable solution. So that's value three, where lots of people want to be heard and hopefully want to help and not just oppose. So 99 is not a complete answer. It's not a full answer. It is the best first step that you can take given the limitations that you're working under. And I say that if you do not do it, then you really are abandoning the basic values of wanting to keep Cottage Grove a beautiful place and loving to live here. If, on the other hand, you move forward, you protect all of those values because you will be making differences. It's not going to be a perfect plan. And as a couple of people have described, there are going to be adjustments that you make. In any plan, as you move forward, you find ways that you improve it. And at those steps, I really urge you to take into account some of the voices that you've heard tonight that don't like this one,
Need to wrap up.
But could like something else and should be invited into the process. So please think on the values. Think how your action tonight will advance those values. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill Christensen.
Bill Christensen, 1337 Elma Avenue, Cottage Grove, Oregon. I visited the Sutherland site a few weeks ago. Sutherland is a little town south of here. It's about 8,000 population, so it's not as big as Cottage Grove. But they had a site that I visited all day, actually. And I really felt good about this site. I talked to, it's, it's a site in Sutherland. It's four or five blocks away from any neighborhood, and it's nowhere near a school. And it's fenced, and they spread hay on the ground so to keep it dry. And there was 20 homeless people living there, including three women, not while I was there, but overall. And that's the place that the homeless know they can go. And it's fully fenced with a, with a door, with a gate. And they, that's where they go. And the police in Sutherland won't allow them to set up camp in any of the parks. They have that place to go. And if they, if they want to go into town, town is maybe four or five blocks away. It's not that far. But there's no neighborhoods near there, so they're not getting pushback from any neighbors. And I just felt really good about this site. And I would encourage anybody, city council members, anybody in attendance here tonight, if you want to look at an alternate site that I think is a good pattern for Cottage Grove, go down to Sutherland, find out where it is, go look at it. And, and it'll give you a perspective on, on some ideas that are working. I do believe in any plan, and I've said this before, I'm going to say it again. I believe any plan has to have structure, accountability, and personal responsibility. And you can call it low barrier, you can call it high barrier. It has to have those three things. I grew up from a boy to a man because I finally had to get a hold of structure, accountability, and personal responsibility. And I think there's testimonies from a lot of people in that regard. So I would just encourage you, there has to be a site in Cottage Grove that is far enough away from schools, far enough away from neighborhoods, yet close enough so that the homeless, if they need to go into town and buy something, they can. There has to be a site somewhere in this town that is a pattern after Sutherland. And I would encourage you, and maybe I'm ignorant, maybe you come to the conclusion that 99 is the only site. I disagree with that. Remember, the people that live right around the 99 site are diametrically opposed to it. Let's not become mob rule and rule those people out. They have skin, they live close enough where a homeless population will directly affect their lives. And let's not forget about them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Duncan Newberry.
Duncan Newberry, 8045 East Sears Road, Cottage Grove, Oregon. Thank you all for giving me some time to speak. This feels a little familiar, like I could stand here before. Brings back some memories. Like, I remember most probably even more than 80% of people at the town hall supported doing something. Some of them, 60% entirely, 20% somewhat. 60% entirely supported the not having 99 children, 12% agreed somewhat. I'm one of those somewhats that have some concerns, distance from town. However, the people from professionals, they had a really hard report. And I'm willing to listen to a professional, like a doctor, a doctor advice. And homeless people, professional homeless people advice. Is the plan perfect? Of course not. We're human beings. All of our endeavors are imperfect by nature. Will we have to adapt? Certainly. One gentleman, who's such a just a concern about the industrial area, I definitely feel that that needs to be addressed. You know, we have resources available for our homeless kids. We should have resources available for security in the neighboring community. People said, I've heard a lot of comments, like, people say this or people say that. It's easy to secondhand innuendo things. I don't think that that, if someone's got a real problem, there's a system for that. Otherwise, I feel like we should move forward with the majority of people. The largest meeting we had said 80%, 80%. Said, let's move forward with this, let's do something. If it's, you know, if there, if issues arise, we will have a contract with the provider, we can work with that. Modification is part of contract, we do it all the time. And rather than waiting for a perfect solution, a place that's close to town, but not next to anybody, but doesn't have any neighbors, neighbors will always be concerned. I would be concerned if I was there, too. But I think you should definitely talk to those people. And you can't say no, you can say, what's your actual problem? Security? That's, that's solved, we have police. We have cameras, we have assistance. We have connection with the provider. If you get your camera, somebody don't like, things you don't like, go to the provider, hey, is this your guy? You need, you need to deal with this. This can be dealt with. So I encourage the council to move forward with this site again. And assess the progress of periodic intervals in dealing with the contracted provider to make sure that these, these problems are addressed quickly and with a, without ending the process. Simply doing nothing is not an option. Homeless people are not going to go away just because we find them inconvenient. Addiction isn't going to go away just because we all find them inconvenient. But we can address these issues more over time. For people who say that, oh, we need to deal with mental health issues and addiction before we address homelessness, how easy is it to get to a meeting if you only take one shower a week? You don't have access to a phone, a car. You have someplace to go where at least you can leave your stuff and then go to your meeting, it's a lot easier. I don't know how many, I've looked for a job, well, homeless, it's a drag. You know, find somewhere to get a shower at night. Where do you, where's my address? Can you access the homeless shelter because then they know you're homeless? We need to destigmatize homelessness. Yes, people are homeless, working people are homeless, veterans are homeless. And we need to take two, give those people the same respect we would give any human being. And assume, it's always your brother was, that they're trying to be better. So please move forward with this. And I also would encourage you to, now we're being, we're being retroactive now, let's be proactive and let's deal with some of the other problems. Access to addiction services, access to mental health services, access to reasonably priced housing. When I moved here, I moved here because I could rent a house for $1,200 a month, which is $47,000 a year. I can pay my family to, that same house, now $2,000 to rent. I could do that at $47,000 a year for four kids. So let's get more places where people who work and have kids can move forward to be have more people moving here with kids and joining our community. Thank you for your time, and I am done.
Thank you. Feather Bosted.
Hi, Honorable Council and Mayor. Thank you for letting me speak. Thank you, you guys, for Thank you, you guys, for your help of service. Wow, it is sometimes pretty up my seat, but it's a lot. And thank you. I still, I was very thankful that there was more time. Again, I still feel very rushed with this proposal. I feel like there's so many questions that have not been answered yet. The cost for the city made choices for this. I don't believe this is the only solution. I do believe it's time for us as a community to come together. There are so many really amazing choices, like the micro shelter, or just many different choices that we as a community can come together and make. I don't believe it's our government's solution. I don't believe it's, I don't believe it's your responsibility, it's our city council to take care of this problem. I believe it's my problem, and it's us as a community. I know that it's going to take a cooperative effort from business, as well as our religious community, our churches, and police, and the city. So I still, I still really urge you to weigh in on this proposal. I still would like to see us come together as a community, pool our resources, so that it's a solution that we are all feeling very good about moving forward. I know that really great effort has been made in this one proposal, I'm still not, I'm not behind it. I definitely believe that it's, as we deal with our neighbors here, our most vulnerable people here in Cottage Grove, I want it to be a loving integration into our community. We have to be a healthy community, and a healthy community does take care of their most vulnerable people, or old people, young people, and people that are financially and as well as mentally ill, make them vulnerable. So I do think that it's going to, the answers here are going to be relational, and it's going to be, as a healthy community, inviting people into it. I think that there are some great solutions that still have not been explored. I would, I would love to see a proposal that we could vote on this, to see, to take a real, and really see how many people are for or against it, if this is the way to move forward, because it's such a big, I know it's going to be a big expense, and while we're spending our relatively small budget as a small city on this one solution, I would like it to be with the most buy-in possible. So I don't know what those numbers are, but I've seen other housing first models, and again, there's lots to learn, I have been learning, and so I'm really optimistic about us as a community coming together and being creative. I do think what your job is, is to look over ways that we can incorporate new ideas, like the square one buildings, like the different styles of building codes that I know we're going to, as we, as we come, move into new creative solutions for, we do need housing that's different than our usual, and with different standards. So I want to see these villages, I want to see maybe some, the ability to put small building structures in people's backyards, there's been some great stuff happening. That block, it's called Block something up in Seattle, it's very interesting, wonderful. So I encourage you to, again, put a hold on this, and tell more people we're satisfied with this as a solution. And thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor and City Councilors. Ruth Lenos, I live at 7178 C Street in Springfield. I'm a board member and president of Beds for Freezing Nights, I've been a part of that not long after its inception in 2009. So I appreciate the cold goods. I'm also the executive director of South Lane Wheels. And what I know from my experience with Beds for Freezing Nights is, it was a great response when we were looking for a warming shelter for a period of time from November to March, a place that we could activate for those who were going to be exposed to cold weather. And we were fortunate to have hosting locations at churches, and we had volunteers that were willing to support and facilitate that. We're in a new circumstance. It's hard to find volunteers. It is not something that can be operated with a volunteer staff like it has in the past. And so personally, and from the Beds for Freezing Nights board, we were very appreciative when the mandate to provide something a little more substantial under COVID was met with some resources from the county and a program that could actually be managed with paid staff and volunteers. Did that work? Well, it operated, but it didn't get the volunteer resourcing you would imagine, because most of the volunteers in our community were the vulnerable population that needed to stay home. So on this side of COVID, looking at this situation, I was really encouraged to hear that there was consideration for potentially a 24/7 year-round resource for the homeless and unhoused population, mainly because it is really hard to find individuals who are willing to commit their schedules for a period of time to respond to an activation that's unpredictable, which is what the warming shelters were designed to operate. Instability, it was just a crapshoot of when was something going to happen and how was it going to be fulfilled. So I encourage, if we can go forward with something that is very stable, and it can be resourced in a very low-cost, if possible, manner, I know it's expensive, but it's interesting how the city has already been investing quite a cost to staff members to maintain what's currently been in place. And if we could look at resources to collaborate and see if we could come up with solutions in a location. Selfishly, as Director of South Lane Wheels, I'd like to remind the council that last year we proposed to the city using the warming shelter location at Trailhead Park for a potential transit hub. We'd love to see that maintained. And so I'm in support of the 99 site, mainly because South Lane Wheels can provide service to that location. It's within the city limits, and we provide a low-cost transportation that's available for anybody. And my staff has told me that not many homeless or unhoused have used our resources, but I think we could be creative in finding ways to transport them to and from a site within the city limits, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
I came here to talk about homelessness or homelessness. But I'd like to preface it with just a comment about, to ODOT, I don't know if it's still here. I hope that North 16th Street is included in their plans. It's one hovel after another, all the way from Safeway North. Until this past year, I was part of the silent majority. But I'm here again to plead my case, hoping that persistence and logic will affect your decision on how to deal with the homeless or houselessness, if we prefer, of Cottage Grove. I know what it feels like to be homeless. I know what it's like to come from a broken home with an alcoholic father and both parents with mental issues and being very poor. My grandparents, who were far from perfect, raised me during my teen years. If they had not taken me in and given me a stable home, and a home-like, home life, and some sense of family, I might very well be living on the street somewhere. Besides that, there were a few short bouts in the military when we had no housing for a few weeks to a few months. On the other side of the spectrum, since 1990, I have taken in four different dads, one of which turned out to be a family of three. Each was for a period of several months to a little over a year, each having a different situation, but each with no better alternative. By the way, none were addicted to drugs or alcohol. They were each the kind of examples you give that the housing would make a big difference. I didn't intend to be a do-gooder, the situations were just there, and I didn't receive any material compensation. I can report one success rate out of those four. She had already had a plan to take a junior college course that would certainly land her a stable job and financial independence upon completion. I made the rules for staying in my home rather tough. No boyfriends, she had to keep her fast food job as well as go to school, she had to keep a B average in grades. She said she couldn't comply with the first two rules, but that she had never even made one B in her entire life. I stuck to my guns and saying that she was as smart as I was, that she often beat me in board games. At the end of the course, she made only one B. All the rest were As. She turned out to be very successful in that ensuing job. That was the only one success story out of four. I applaud people like Aslam, and hope that we can help some of those people. But you do not have enough social workers or enough mental health professionals to deal successfully with the homeless that we already have here in Cottage Grove, much less those who will be drawn in from other places around our state, from other states, and from the border, that is, from other places and other countries, rather. Even if you were to provide free education, I don't believe that you will acquire the numbers or the quality of workers, professionals, that you expect. Look at the Housing First model that already is existing in other places, and look at the poor foster care system that we have produced here in Oregon. Not enough caseworkers, not enough food homes, but plenty of corruption in that system. There is not nearly enough incentive for responsibility or enough time to achieve the results you're expecting. In the meantime, you're providing a general sense of entitlement. And even if this Housing First is initially paid for entirely by individuals and or groups from outside, the taxpayers here in Cottage Grove will eventually be funding its ongoing expenses. How many government projects have worked themselves out of existence? In the meantime, you are both punishing the neighbors of your Housing First projects, no matter where they are located, and you're enabling the majority of those you want to You do not have enough time to successfully change the incentive and the self-image of those you are trying to help. Meanwhile, the ideology of our precious state and federal government is producing more, not less, social destruction. Remember, we're on the I-5 corridor, and right now, we have 7,000, more than 7,000 coming over the border.
You need to wrap up.
And they hope that it will be totally dissolved, that we will have no border. Yes. Build it, they will come, but you will not be happy in the final result, and neither will the rest of us be.
Pam Sayulo. Sorry if I mispronounced that.
Everybody does. Hi, my name is Pam Chilo. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to speak. I live at 207 South Second Street, and I went to the town hall, and I appreciated the format. And I can't say anything that hasn't already been said, but I do want to let you know that I do support the South, the 99 site, and I think you need to be compassionate. And I hope that you vote for it. Thank you. And I care about the children, I'm a 25-year educator.
Okay, Mr. Myers.
So you have before you tonight the April 25 motion that was made and passed on April 25th. Then in the subsequent meeting, it was reconsidered, and it failed on that on May 9th, and after that, it was moved and seconded and unanimously supported to bring it back to the next meeting, and that's tonight. And so you again have the original motion from April 25th to authorize the development of the shelter at Highway 99 site, back on the table, ready for your consideration.
Counselur Flack.
So I do need to declare a potential conflict of interest, and just as a refresher real quick, under the state rules, a potential conflict is like I was a contractor or I was in a related field where it's possible, I could apply for something that would benefit me financially, and so I declare it, but then I continue with the conversations. If I have an actual conflict, like say I was the organization that was going to do it, I would have to recuse myself completely. So with that, I'm declaring a potential conflict of interest. I work for a community sharing program, and as we've stated before, we have no intention on applying for an RFP should there ever be any possible solution to this. Thank you.
Counsel Irvin.
Well, I start by saying I appreciate all the turnout. This is the first time on any issue that we've handled in my time here serving that it's engaged as much of the community, and I appreciate that. We do stand divided, as we have witnessed over this time, and I think it is, it does seem to be somewhat ideological in terms of how we view solutions to problems that we're So I would like to be a part of a solution, I would like to be involved in it, but it, for me, cannot be, for me, it cannot be by the force of the taxation system to fund. It needs to come out of the generosity of us individuals, and that's where I stand. Anybody that, you know, would like to talk about it, I'm happy to. I think there's reason to be had in that. So my position would be that we do the requirement to protect us as a city from litigation and comply with the rulings as they are, and continue to encourage other groups and to form participation locally on ways to address on an individual basis those who are homeless in our community. And that, so I would... And that, so I would love the conversation to continue, but I would support a motion towards that end.
Counsel Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I realize this is a very passionate item on our agenda tonight, and I needed to clarify a few things. There was some rumors running around through City Hall and into the community that Counselor Urban, Counselor Roberts, myself, that we somehow were meeting and having conversations and that we swayed Chalice's vote. And for the record, that did never, never happened. The only conversation that Counselor Urban and I had was about Roberts rules. And Counselor Roberts knew nothing about the reconsideration, and Counselor Chalice Savage knew nothing about it. My own husband knew nothing about it beforehand. We didn't even know if that was going to come to fruition, kind of a conversation, and it was very organic. And I also heard Counselor Flack made a reference to, it was an opportune time since Counselor Stenit was not out that meeting. We had no way of knowing that Counselor Stenit would not be here, and it wouldn't have affected the vote anyway. Also, I wanted to clarify a few things, too. There was, in that same respect, I heard a lot of talk about serial meetings, and the only time that the three of us worked together was on the radio and at Bohemian Park to listen to the concerns of citizens. We had no conversations after. I heard rumors of subpoenaing our phones, and that's the first time I've ever heard that be mentioned about counselors. And I have to say, it was very disheartening that we would be accused of anything along those lines. It never happened, and was personally upsetting to me because that's an integrity thing. So also, as Greg said, as Counselor Urban said in the last meeting, that it was not a power play. It was never a power play. And we actually could have squashed the whole thing that night. And as you know, Counselor Flack. And I am of the understanding that Counselor Roberts thought that this had to be a unanimous vote tonight, and I just heard that. I didn't hear that directly from him. I heard it through someone else. And so I'm disheartened that he's not here to vote on it because we actually wanted Counselor Stenit here to vote, and that's why we brought it back to this meeting. And I think that was a serious misunderstanding. I am in alignment with, I, first of all, I heard that there, like somebody out here said tonight, that I heard that there was a meeting and that it, I don't know exactly who all was in there. I do know that Mr. Kalsh was present, the city manager was present, and Counselor Flack was present. Can you tell me what that meeting was?
It was stakeholders, the community stakeholders.
Stakeholders meeting. Okay. And the definition of a stakeholder is a person entrusted with the stake, the stakes of betters, or one that has a stake in an enterprise, or one who is involved in or affected by a course of action. I believe still that my Flack does have a conflict of interest, and you should not vote. Stakeholders tier two, conflict arises when a council member's duties of loyalty to stakeholders or to a company is compromised. This would happen when certain board members exercise influence over others through favors, a relationship, financial or psychological manipulation. Even though some stakeholders describe themselves as independent of management, company, or major stakeholders, they may bind themselves with a conflict of interest if they're forced into an agreement with a dominant board member in the same circumstances. Some independent directors form a distinct stakeholders group and only demonstrate loyalty to members of that group. They tend to represent their own interests and not the interests of the community as a whole. And the reason why I go here is because I was informed that Mr. Kalsh had some very negative and derogatory comments in this meeting about the dissenting votes on this council. And so I question how that would affect someone that is also a stakeholder, they're both stakeholders together, and how that could affect a vote. And I just think we need to be upfront about that if you are going to continue to vote. I also want to address the community as far as people saying that no other plans have been brought out. And I think that we should be looking more, at more than just the Housing First model. I think that there are other models, too, with treatment first, community first, and those have had great success. And I also like the possibility of a two-week low barrier. I am definitely of the opinion that a low barrier brings a lot of problems to the community that are already here, and I do want to address that. I had to call 911 last night. A lot of you probably know that I live and I work in downtown. So I see it all. I see people walking down those streets, and it breaks my heart to see a lot of our young people and watch them deteriorate through drugs. And I see it every single day, and I see them get worse. And without help, they will continue down that road and get worse and worse. Last night, I called 911 because there was an altercation outside where a man was yelling obscenities, was very upset. And so I opened the window, and my husband ran downstairs. And what was happening is he had witnessed a drug deal, and he lives in the St. Vincent de Paul building, which is a Housing First model. And he was very upset because he witnessed a drug deal and was yelling, "I'm not going to take this anymore." F you, f you, and chased the dealers down the street. And he was saying, "There's a pregnant woman that lives up there. You leave these people alone. Stop dealing them drugs." And it was heart-wrenching because he also lives there, and he is part of that program, but he is frustrated by the drug use that is continuing on there. And my heart went out to him for that. On Friday night, I had a get-together at my house and heard a call come across the radio, and turns out it was at the homeless camp at the community center, and there was a drug overdose there, fentanyl. And they had Narcan in person twice and managed to save her life, thank God. There was another, there was an overdose at the warming shelters. They had Narcan this individual. A lot of the homeless carry Narcan now to try to help each other. They got a call that they're at the warming shelter, that there was three individuals using fentanyl. And so that's why they went there and were lucky enough to Narcan this person. There was one death. Fentanyl is a huge problem in our community right now, and it's only growing worse every single day. And we're, and my fear with this Housing First model is that we are keeping them alive long enough to try to find them a home, and we're not, and then getting them in a home that they're still using. And we need to get them into these programs. So that's why I would be so much more behind something that has these, I'm not heartless. This is not about this, no matter how I'm being painted right now. And we're so tied up with that houseless versus homeless semantics of it all, and I think we need to get past that as a community. I think that there are other options. I personally would like to make a motion to refer to a committee to investigate and compare different styles of homeless camps on the Housing First model versus the treatment or community first model, and get some members of our community together to work towards something like this so that we can examine the two different types before we make a decision, and I'd like to table this vote tonight.
Counsel Flack.
Just a quick point of order. So we're, and this is obviously the minutia of Roberts rules, where are we at as far as the reconsideration?
You have the motion for, of the original motion on the table. That is what is on the table with this, actually.
Is there a path for us to prolong and have a continued discussion given the situation room of the Roberts rules?
As it being an active motion on the table, it's not one that you can table. If it was a discussion, you could table it for a future meeting. But you have a motion actually on the table from the previous meeting that, to vote on
Counsel Urban.
At the last meeting, I asked the question, what rules we are operating under. The response that I took away was it was Roberts rules, it would be the current addition. I understood on the radio today, you mentioned we don't operate under Roberts rules. What is it?
We have adopted a modified Roberts rules in the council rules. That's what you've adopted, and there was quite a lengthy discussion in the development of those rules that you didn't want to do Roberts rules. And that's why you have a specified reconsideration procedure in your adopted council rules to avoid the complexities of Roberts rules.
So can I get clarity? So we do not operate under Roberts rules of order. We operate strictly on the rules stated in the rules of the council. Is that correct?
Right.
And that does not include what is in the outline of the agendas? That does not count as a rule of the council?
What do you mean, the outline of the agenda?
There's a rule specifically on the outline of the agenda about signing up ahead of time to speak. That's not found in the rules, but we've been enforcing that as if it's one of our council rules.
Yeah. And that's because, as a result of the council, the council can adopt, and the mayor and the council said, hey, because of COVID and the virtual presence that we're in, and trying to make sure we have some way to control and monitor and run that at a good meeting, they had created the sign-in.
But it's not enforceable rule? If you get down to the minutia of it.
You know, they're your rules, and so you can enforce them.
I believe that rules are stated under rules of council rules, right? And that's outside of those rules, what's listed in the agenda? Or do we reference that the agenda items are part of the rules?
They're part of the rules.
Or is that specified? How do we know? Are there other things that are outside of the rules of council rules? So appendix, whatever it is, the charter, has a list of rules. I would understand that to mean that that's the comprehensive list of rules unless you're referencing something else.
You have additional rules in your charter, and then I think under the general administration, you have some additional rules there as well. But the agenda and information there is listed in those rules, and the council's given the right to create the additional rules.
Just by speaking them, or?
Yeah.
Counsel Flack.
So, and I'm kind of following where you're going here, Counselor Urban, and I would love to sit and have more conversation if that's what it takes, because it still clearly sounds like there's not one direction, and I am afraid we're going to end up with zero. I mean, absolutely nothing. There's not a citizen in the town that wants that. I know in my heart that nobody wants that. So I guess I am looking for some mechanism. I'm fine having a committee. I'm fine with the council beating through this. It's painful, but clearly necessary for us and for the community. Can we suspend our rules? And would that take a motion first and then carry forward? This was, this was my concern, because we almost ended up here on another matter on the water issue for bringing the issue down from Lane Creek, where we almost got into a situation where we could not resolve it because of the complexity of Roberts rules, which is why when we were drafting them, we did not want a whole-blown Roberts rules implemented because of the complexity of that process.
Right. Counsel Savage.
Thank you so much. I would like to echo what Candace was saying, Counsel Salisbury said. I was not coerced when I made my recommendation to reconsider the vote last week, so I would like to support her in that it was very organic. And the questions that I had in regards to the homeless shelter that I felt like I needed to answer in order to make the best decision going forward were questions such as, who's going to pay for the shelter after the ARCA funds run out? And I have talked with the Lane County manager for housing and homelessness, who has informed me that Oregon Housing and Community Services has a funding mechanism where you can apply for grants. And there is very specifically a grant called Out of the Cold Funds, which has over a million dollars in it, which could potentially provide another year of allocations of dollars. So I thought that was really, really positive. I also didn't feel comfortable knowing and thinking that if somebody from Eugene finds out that we have a low-barrier shelter, how are they going to come into town? What are the parameters? And that was not clear to me. And it was also explained to me that there are programs in Eugene which far surpass what we are doing here or trying to do here. And the reality is, if somebody cannot find shelter in Eugene, they're certainly not going to be getting shelter with us. We can provide those parameters, such as must be retaining services in Cottage Grove for, say, up to six months, and that could be considered a barrier, but that can fall within the low-barrier verbiage. Another concern of mine is if somebody were to go into the low-barrier shelter and say get into a fight, they didn't follow the rules, what would then happen? Would they be available to go into the parks? And that is not the case because they are choosing not to follow the rules. That doesn't mean that they can then go into the park. So I'm reminded, the analogy that comes to mind is when my husband and I found out we were pregnant with our oldest son. What are we going to do? How are we going to pay for this? How is this going to change our lives? To some degree, there has to be a little bit of blind faith and trust. Trust in your partner and trust in your community, trust in your family supports. You've got to trust other people because people will help you along the way. I'm relying on my faith, and I think of things that Jesus did. My gosh, He would wash the feet of folks that He disagreed with because He valued people. So with that being said, I will make the proposal that we move forward with the Highway 99 site as written on the agenda.
So if that's already on there, that we don't need it, do we?
Right.
Yeah. So the motion's already on the table. Counsel Salisbury.
But we may, I made a motion to table.
But we may, I made a motion to table and to a committee.
And nobody seconded.
But we were talking about it. We did not know that it was until Richard said that, and then we went off on other discussion. So I actually made that motion first.
But the other one is on the table.
The other motion is already made first. It was made at the last meeting that put this item on the table for discussion. There's no motion needed to put it on the table. It's already there.
So if I may, the, the way we handled that last meeting, I thought was really respectful of everybody. To, to have a full conversation, hearing everything else out, getting the full exploration of what can be done, not just taking, it is our ultimate responsibility to make these decisions. And that's, you know, that's, it kind of takes me back. I just don't feel like that, that's a good way to go. I think we've demonstrated good faith, those who are opposing this, that we value each other's opinions. We're doing this together as a council. So some things take longer, right?
The city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but the way I see it is the motion was made at the last meeting to, to deal with that. So that motion has to be dealt with tonight before anything else could move forward. So you can't table it. You can't revisit unless, I don't even think you can change and modify it.
This looks really confusing when you don't know the rules, and you've been asking about what the rules are, and you're not getting clear answers on what the rules are, which ones we're referencing. It's, I hope understandable that I've been trying to figure that out and getting different answers. I'm operating in good faith.
As am I.
As am I. And I actually, sorry, Mr. Mayor, I, I made the request twice to even find out if it is, as you've been saying, Mr. Myers, that we have to do a low barrier to be in compliance with the law. And I've made the request twice now for a second opinion. And I spoke with the mayor on Friday, who told me that you talked to him, and that you guys decided that that needed to go to a vote. But I didn't know anything about that, that it needed to go to a vote. I was never told that it needed to go to a vote. And that could have easily been handled at the meeting, and we could have voted on it.
And, and I'm going to correct you, Counsel Salisbury, because I never said that we had to do an alternative shelter. If you look at the, the presentation, the presentation is, here is the basic stuff that we need to do to comply with the law, and it does not include an alternative shelter. It means we have to get rid of all of our rules and laws that restrict camping, and we have to comply with the basics of Martin versus Boise. Now, if we want to take the step of prohibiting people from camping in public parks, the Boise, the Martin Boise case says you do need alternative shelter. But it doesn't say you have to create alternative shelter.
Well, I, I read the minutes just today, and it was talking about the low barrier and that it would create transitional housing. And that's when Greg asked what exactly is transitional housing. And Carrie could not explain that. And so it's all very confusing. And so that's why I, as a counselor, am so frustrated, because I feel like we have gotten not a lot of straight answers. And I feel like there's been meetings, and we have not been very involved in this whole thing. And I, I, it's, it's frustrating to me, having to make decisions for people, not feeling like I have even all the legal answers. As far as, I wanted to talk to Chalice, and she was afraid to meet with me, because it would create a serial meeting. And I was like, I, I didn't meet with anybody else. So how would that even? So it's frustrating to me. And, you know, and now to hear that we can't even have any discussions other than just a housing first model is disheartening, at the very least.
Keep it down. Counsel Fleck.
So I have a way out of this, but it's a pain in the backside, and I'd really rather have a other one. We can vote, then one of the affirmative votes next meeting can go ahead and reconsider, and we can just do this over and over again until we go through it. I would really rather not do that. But I also would much rather reach consensus than try to ram anything through. I think it's not fair to the other members of this council. I don't think it's fair to all the people on either side of this issue in the audience. And that's why I was asking, can we have a vote to suspend our rules so that we can get out of this quagmire that we're at? Because I, I don't think, I, I'm just speaking for me. I'm, I, obviously, for anybody in this room I'm passionate about, that I think that a lot of work has gone into the plan. But I don't want to shove a plan through that not, either people aren't ready for, or they would like to modify to where we can come up with something that maybe we all don't love, but we can live with. That would be my ideal situation. And I'm just really working with you guys here, trying to find.
Yeah. In Section 26 of the rules, you have the effect of the rules, and these rules of procedure do not grant the rights and privileges of the members of the public or third parties, but the city council may, by a majority vote, temporarily waive any provisions herein.
So can I make a motion while a motion's on the floor to suspend the council rules for this one item?
I, I like, I think if it gets you to where you want to be, I, I don't want to draw lines that stand that prevent you from doing that. So I believe, I believe you can.
So, Mr. Mayor, I will move that we suspend the council rules on this item so that we can continue to discuss you on, on this, on the homeless shelter agenda item.
Got a motion with a second. Is any discussion? Counsel Stanton.
I would, I would love to reach consensus on this. I think it's not you at this point. We've spent hours in here, hours. Our positions are clear on this. There are people that don't support this site and there are people that do. It's very simple. I do not think tabling this, putting it off, going forward, I mean, we're, we're not getting anywhere doing this. We have not. We, there is a first step, and that is finding a site for a low-barrier shelter. Otherwise, we're going to have people camping in our parks. I don't want anyone camping in our parks, homeless or not. Does not matter. You can take the stigma away from it. Any unmanaged camping is disgusting. I don't want it. We have to give an alternative, or you, or you need to openly disagree with the council that says we do.
Counsel Salisbury.
If I may, Counsel Stanton, that's not what it's about at this point. We are looking at different options, and we can change our ordinances right now, which is what we should have done from the very beginning. We have made it so that the police are not enforcing camping right now. And they, and it can be enforced right now. And we can drop some, we have other options, but that is, this is a temporary thing. But I don't want to make a hasty decision for the community as a whole, and for the unhoused as a whole, to continue this problem and not get to the root cause. And I personally have looked at a lot of different other options as well, and I would like those to be put out on the table, too.
There's nothing hasty about this.
Counsel Fleck.
So, and, you know, I, I'll just go back to, originally, I preferred the North Douglas site. I mean, I, I, I think there is a lot of opportunity here for us to have conversations, you know? Do we, you know, add, you know, limited barriers? I mean, I, like I said, I, I, I find those challenging, but I would welcome those conversations, because I clearly, this, this, you know, I've heard comments tonight in public testimony, how many times have we talked about this? Where somebody said there's no plan, you know, for what to do when the site gets full? Well, absolutely, there is. So we have not done a good job educating the folks in the audience. And I think there's room for us to continue this discussion. And so, and I, and I do think that the council, in good faith in that last meeting, all voted unanimously to bring this forward. You didn't have to do that. And out of integrity, I think that we're obliged to do the same here, to continue this conversation. I, I think it's the right thing to do, and I absolutely support it a hundred percent.
So we have a motion to suspend the rules on the table. If there's no more discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. So now what?
So, could I offer that it is really warm in here? It is, it is quarter to 10. And I know that when I'm hot and tired, I don't think well. So what I would actually suggest is, let's just bring this forward next time. I don't know that a committee's a good idea. I think we're just going to have to painfully do it here, because unfortunately, really, we really need all of the voices at the table, maybe work sessions.
Counsel Salisbury.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to make, throw out there that I would, I would like some work sessions. And also, I would like to make the motion to change the ordinances that we already had on the table. We had talked about choosing the parks that we didn't want people staying overnight in, and leaving a couple parks open, and that we want to make that decision so that we can figure out, just for now, until we can work on this further. I, I don't think that this is a good thing at City Hall, making city employees. I, I just don't feel like it's a good working environment there, because I think it makes the city liable. I'm worried about open flames next to the City Hall building. I'm worried about them, open flames next to Community Center and the library. And if something happens, the city will be liable. So I am concerned about that.
I guess I would just offer that the reason we haven't gone to that piece yet is that without some sort of mechanism, a shelter of some sort, we violate the rules. And so we, that was the whole part of having this discussion first, was so that once we resolved this, then we could say, folks could only be here without violating those laws.
Counsel Salisbury.
I would like the attorney's opinion on this, because Grants Pass versus Blake states it very differently. It, it does not say that we're actually in violation if there is a place where people can go. And actually, Carrie Conley said it that way, too, that you can actually just say the parks that you do not allow it in, and change those ordinances, as long as you have a couple parks open.
I, I think there is a spectrum of options that you have available. And each of those different options carry with them different risks. And, you know, I apologize that my career is not exacting, that it's hard to give yes and no answers to legal questions like this when we're talking about the, the evolving world of Eighth Amendment and homelessness. So while, you know, we certainly have the answer in Boise, that a Boise statute fully enforced is unlawful, and we have the juxtaposition of that of, you know, providing housing for everyone, that's certainly lawful, or not enforcing any of the laws, that's, that's lawful. And we're, we're talking about what's in between. And we're also, and then we have the, the new statute that would be coming into place in 2023, that has us look holistically and objectively at the whole, our whole system of regulations. And so, you know, part of our job, Carrie's job, and my job as city attorneys, is to think in the future about hypothetical plaintiffs who are going to be suing the city, and how to guard you all against those plaintiffs. And, and so if we have someone who is suffering from substance abuse and has a dog, and needs a place to live, and we don't have a place for that person, we can't enforce rules against that person, or they will very likely win in the lawsuit. And so I, I'm going around, I know. So what I'm saying is, you know, it depends. So I, I think closing off certain parks is an option in most cases. But it doesn't guard us against maybe that, those, those select plaintiffs who don't find those other parks suitable for whatever reason. So it doesn't guard us against all the potential activities.
Which they can always find them unsuitable.
Sure.
And no matter what you're offering. And my balancing act here is also protecting the city with fire dangers. And I know there's open flames in those tents right now. And we all do. And so I'm concerned. And, you know, if somebody dies there, what's our liability with overdoses? I don't even know that. If somebody overdoses on our city property, and we're, and they're a tenant, I, I don't know. And so that's why I look to you to answer those questions and really weigh this out. And, you know, I'm, that's our job, you know?
So, Counsel Salisbury made a motion, but no one seconded it. Is anyone going to second it?
What was the motion again?
No, I didn't.
I thought you did.
I, no, I was just talking about.
Oh, sorry then.
I don't believe I did.
So I think if I heard Counsel Salisbury, she was suggesting, I would say, let's schedule a work session.
Yes, I have a work session for sure. And then, I would love that.
Because I recall in the, in the first, one of the first meetings we had on the subject, we had a level of, at least on the ordinance changes, whether it be changes to how being on the street, in your car, or waxing some ordinances on being able to have, sleep in an RV on a property. It seemed like we had general consensus on that. I'd love to get that nailed down, so that we can focus. And I do know that part of the hesitation on that was, well, that means we did nothing. But I would, I would hope that we can operate also in good faith, that no, we want, we want to do something and the right thing. And I would admit that I have principles, but I also understand this process. And I am, I want to go down that route.
Counsel Salisbury.
Mr. Mayor, that was my understanding, too, is that we had that pretty ironed out. Like, we were looking at ordinances, and it was supposed to be brought back to us. And I, as I recall, maybe I'm wrong, but that, that's my recollection as well.
And I want the camp trailer in the driveway to be in there, because we have that as you can't do it. I know what's happening now. So let's, let's make people not be lawbreakers. Do you have any, got more?
No, I, I, no. I, I think, let's have, you know, I was just kind of thinking about our Ford leadership days. I mean, we get Faye up there with some sticky notes and, you know, sticky buttons and come up, because, because clearly, we're struggling. We need to really try to look at all of the core pieces of this and try to come up with something that we can build consensus on, because I, I think it's too important for us not to come up with something that, that the community wants. I mean, this has been divisive, and I think that we need to come up with something that's going to be, that's going to work. And I caution folks, not any of us are going to love all of it. And that's, that's, but I guess let's, let's start there.
Got your direction?
When are you going to schedule a work session? Since you've suspended your rules, are you going to set one now?
We could, if you'd like.
Counsel Stanton.
Didn't we vote on, okay, the co-changes?
We, we talked about those as a package with everything. And so.
I thought that was our first move, was to, okay, the changes that put us in violation of the, of the code essentially.
It was, it was part of the package, and we got going on the proposal. And it was part of the original motion, that everything got taken out of that motion that Counselor Fleck made, to do this, 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 and do the ordinances.
I thought we did that weeks ago, before.
Yeah.
The, no?
No, we didn't vote on the.
We've never voted on the.
We just talked about it, and said, here's, here's the proposals and the suggestion. But we can bring those back.
Well, let's start over.
So when we going to do a work session?
I would like to do it on a night we don't have councils, so we're not limited by an hour or whatever. I think maybe the 6th or, oh, 20th, we have Yak. Maybe the 6th.
The 6th, you have Yak as well?
Oh.
You don't have Yak. You don't have Yak.
I don't. Somebody does.
Somebody does.
I apologize. Well, we could do a different day of the week. I just, I really think part of the problem is we need to slow down.
And Tuesdays are the best day for me for nothing going on, so.
So third Tuesdays, I have a board meeting, but beyond that, I'm free.
Tuesday, the seventh?
I can, I can do the seventh.
You can?
No.
Fourteenth?
You have your downtown meeting that day. It's on the calendar here. Now, and we can, we can move Yak if we need to.
What's the final Tuesday in the morning?
The final Tuesday is.
That's a long ways out. Wednesday, the eighth.
That's Planning Commission meeting.
Oh.
We're not on Planning Commission.
But they kind of use the room.
Well, it doesn't sound like that'll work.
We've got the planning commission. Well, wait a minute, isn't the, that's just the work session though, right? Don't they do that in the Sinclair Room?
Do it in here.
They do it in here.
Because of meeting stuff.
Right. I, I think maybe the sixth, if we wanted to.
We'll, we'll get with the Yak and move them.
6:00 PM, you think? 6:00 PM?
Mr. Myers, could we have the Yak join us and see if they can have some insight?
You can ask me.
I think six was out there.
Six o'clock was what I was hearing.
Concerns of council. Anyone got anything? All right. Report to City Manager.
I was going to share with you our Sustainability and Resiliency Challenge website that is now active, but let's see if I can get out of all this. And just, just to let you know that it's there and it is, it is available, but it's shut off, won't know there it is. So we have on our, a new website that we put together, Greening the Grove, and this is our Sustainability and Resiliency Challenge to help our citizens in the community save money and make a difference in the community as a safer and healthier future. We have 12 people that have already found the site and joined it and are working towards some of the different opportunities that are on there. It is a challenge. You can earn points. It scores how you're doing on different things that you can do. Everything from, click on the be energy smart here and, there we go. It'll give you several things that you can do, actions that you can actually take to be energy smart. And so you can turn off switches, you can install smart lighting, you can switch to LED light bulbs. And when you choose those, it'll calculate based on Pacific Power and EPUD. You actually identify when you log into this and create your account, you identify which utility company you have and their rates are in here. And so it calculates what it means to you in savings if you do or participate in different programs. This is a part of, we're doing this for a couple of reasons. One, it's just a great way to help people learn and do little impactful things. The small things are going to make big differences if they add up. We also have a package in this, a provision for resilient. And the resiliency portion goes over how to address emergency situations, how to build your emergency kit, what to do to make an emergency plan. And as you choose those, you can show what kind of points you get. You can compete, you can join community groups, you can form groups, there can be competitions. We have the buy-in from Pacific Power, from EPUD, and also Northwest Natural will probably be installing some incentives onto the program that when certain points are reached or when people achieve certain opportunities and options in here, there may be options or opportunities for you to get a showerhead from Pacific Power or light bulbs or a smart thermostat or things like that that will be, to go along with that. One of the other big reasons is there's a whole section on Waterwise. With our regulations from the state, we have to instigate some conservation measures and do some things to encourage conservation of water. And so this helps satisfy those opportunities or goals or responsibilities that we have under some of the state regulations. And so it's kind of a fun, challenging website to participate in and hopefully we'll have members of the community and council members is at www greeningthegrove.org. You can sign up, you can get friends to sign up, you can compete with your friends, you can do all kinds of opportunities to participate that way and see what kind of impact we can make on the environment in our community. A lot of the actions, some of us are already taking and you can check that, that you're doing that already and it shows you how much you've already done, what some of those savings might be. You may not realize that you're actually having some significant savings by reducing your thermostat or using the LED bulbs and that kind of stuff. So we're going to be kicking this off this next week and promoting this throughout the community, getting people involved. We wanted to make sure the council, I wanted to show you more, but it's late. We'll get this, this moving, so please be aware of that and look forward to everyone participating. That's all I have.
City Attorney?
No, big report for me. Thanks, thanks for having me. Good to be here, good to see you all. Carrie sends her regrets. She was involved in a slight bicycle accident on Sunday and was ordered by our doctor not to leave the house, so I am here instead, but hopefully she'll be on the mend soon and back in part.
Thank you. Okay, so there's no items removed from the agenda. We're adjourned.